Yeah, that one's not working very good.
I'm going to talk to Mr. Clark this week and see if we can make something happen about the clock. Since I deal with a roomful of them all day.
Yeah, you need to...
Do you think they'd get something a little more up to date, like some digital? These clocks probably look like they've been there since this was a crisis, and they were never on time. And when the time changed, everything would be off for like 02:00.
I'm looking on my computer. Oh, my computer. Okay. Yes, can I have your attention, please? I'd like to call this meeting of the St. Charles County Council, meeting of February 24th, to order. We will begin with an invocation by Reverend Scott Mays with the Calvary Temple, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Joe Brazel. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just come to you today and we thank you so much for this awesome country that we live in, the privilege that we have to be able to call on you for strength, for guidance, for direction. I ask that you continue to bless the St. Charles County area, bless these council members, their family, pray for peace, and I pray tonight that we would have your mind, that you would be able to guide and direct decisions, that you would take any attitudes and discussions, that they would come in peace and be done with all diligence and wisdom. We just thank you and give you the praise for it in Jesus' name. Amen.
A pleasure to lead you to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please call the roll.
Councilman Cronin. Councilmember Brazel.
Here.
Councilmember Ehlum.
Here.
Councilmember Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Schneider.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Okay, our first order of business is a public presentation. We have the donation of a bomb detection canine to the sheriff. So Sheriff, will you please come up and fill us in, please?
Is that mean there's no dog?
There is a dog.
Oh.
You can hear him?
Bring your dog over.
She did. See a dog?
Mr. Chairman, members of the county council, the St. Charles County Sheriff's Office is celebrating its 215th anniversary this year. Shortly after the United States took possession of the Louisiana Territory, the sheriff and a justice of the Court of Common Pleas was appointed for the five administrative districts. Mackey Wery was appointed sheriff in 1805 of the massive St. Charles District, which was everything north and west of the Missouri and Mississippi Rivers. The early sheriffs had a great many responsibilities. Included are the three duties that we traditionally associate with the office of sheriff: keeper of the courts, keeper of the jail, and keeper of the peace. By law, the sheriff must attend all sessions of the court and serves as the enforcement arm of the courts. Early in our history, in 1805, our first jail was known as the Ace of Diamonds. It was a small stone structure with a heavy wood door and a diamond-shaped opening for ventilation. In 1805, there were very few criminal laws on the books. By the time you wrote the sheriff a letter, and the letter made it to him, and then by the time he got on his horse and rode to you, it could be months before the sheriff got there. You were pretty much on your own. As you know, the county's Home Rule Charter has taken some of those duties and assigned them to other agencies. In the mid-'90s, the Corrections Department was formed, taking that keeper of the jail responsibility. In 2015, the keeper of the peace duties were transferred to the county police department, and the sheriff still remains as the keeper of the courts. The county courthouse is often a grand old structure, many times located in a prominent spot in downtown or in the center of the town square. The county courthouse serves as the seat of justice in our country. Unfortunately, these courthouses are often the target of extreme behavior, including domestic terrorism, civil disobedience, protest, and violence. This afternoon, I did a Google search for courthouse bombings and received over 1.2 Just a couple of weeks ago, there was a subject that was charged with plotting or constructing an explosive device and plotting to bomb the Warren County Courthouse. Over the years, we've taken numerous measures to improve security at the courthouse, including electronic locking doors, cameras, panic buttons, metal detectors, x-ray machines, just to name a few. And today, with the assistance of the Ryan Griffin Memorial Foundation, we are very excited to add one more tool to our toolbox. Corporal Scott Snead and his partner Max, Max is a very rambunctious, one-year-old black lab who's been nationally certified to detect explosive materials. It's my pleasure at this time to introduce Rick and Kim Griffin from the Ryan Griffin Memorial Foundation.
Excuse me for putting my back to you.
Oh.
Good evening. My name's Kim Griffin. My husband, Rick Griffin.
Put them that way.
This way? Okay. I'm sorry.
Whatever makes you happy.
Yes, you do. Handle how you want.
In 2007 is when we lost our son Ryan to an accidental heroin overdose. On April 28th is when I found Ryan dead in his bed. It was after the direction of my doctor to think of something to do in memory of Ryan, which would also help us with grief process. So by 2009 is when the Ryan Griffin Memorial Foundation became a nonprofit 501(c)(3) foundation in memory of our son. And it started with us awarding scholarships to high school wrestlers. Ryan was a late state champion two times for Francis Howell School District. I am truly a parent that always felt no concern of either one of our sons using drugs. They both were athletes. Unfortunately, it is the real deal that us parents are faced with out there, that the opiate crisis that exists today is everywhere, doesn't matter age, sex, income, anything like that. It's affecting millions of people daily. So to date with the scholarship awards, we have awarded approximately, after this year, it'll be right at 100,000 to recipients. And I always felt in my heart there was more to do with Ryan's foundation, something for drug awareness. So it was approximately 2014, after I prayed on it, the direction from our good Lord gave me one word, and that was canine. And I was very excited and went to my husband and said, "I know what we will be doing to expand on Ryan's foundation. We're going to buy a canine dog." And he just kind of, "Okay."
Smart man.
Then what? And I said, "Well, I don't know." So approximately three months later, he was attending a meeting with the mayor of Wentzville, Nick Giacconi, and he called me at work and said, "I just finished a meeting. I'm out here in Wentzville." And I shared our loss with Mayor Nook, and they got to talking about the Wentzville community, and Mayor Nook, for whatever reason, made the comment, "You know, we really have a great need for a canine in our community." And I said, "He did not just say that." You know, so this was just after a few months that our good Lord, now I knew what I had to do. And our first dog that we awarded went to the city of Wentzville, and that was in 2015, I believe. And I'm very pleased and honored to be here tonight because now I'm in my own community of St. Charles, a resident of about 26 years now, and I'm thrilled to be awarding my own community now with our 11th canine dog to St. Charles County Courts. Max, Scott. Scott, I just recently met at a canine training, and I see that the two of them are very compatible with one another, and that pleases me. So Max is our 11th canine to date, and like I said, I'm just very pleased that it's in my community now. All the other dogs are all over the place. So, do you want to say anything?
Most of the dogs are dual-purpose dogs that protect the officer and sniff drugs. And it's so rewarding when we get the phone call that they've found kilos of heroin or something like that, and they've... And every one of them, and the officers and the dogs, have done so well. And just recently, the DEA had found a false floor in a van with almost a million dollars in...
Seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Cash. And they've... All of them, I mean, they can track a lost person, they can track, like, one of them even, two guys robbed a pizza man, and they tracked him for two miles and caught him. And they were both armed, and, I mean, obviously, they didn't get much there, you know, from the pizza man, but still, just shows how much, you know, how well-trained these dogs are and can track and sniff things out, and just finding a lot, a lot of drugs. And that's just so rewarding to us and makes us want to get out there and raise the money. And we want to thank Dave and Liz Greeshaver. They actually donated the money for Max, friends of ours that I golf with, and they weren't able to make it tonight. They had a death in the family. But that's where we're at with it.
Thank you.
And hope to get many, many more drugs off the streets.
Scott, are you going to present? You want to come up?
We're going to come up. Sure.
Wonderful.
(applause) Nancy Slater.
I don't want to look them in the eye again. I'm sorry.
(laughing)
It's a dancing dog.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. (applause)
Next on the agenda is public comments.
Just a reminder to fill out a card. You will be limited to three minutes, and if we have a subject, we will have three pro, three against, and alternate back and forth, but there's that many that are on one particular topic. Claire?
Colleen Cook.
Just tell us your story.
Tell us your story.
Okay. We live in the Meadow Ridge subdivision. I am the president of the HOA. There's also other residents. But anyway, we have a home up there that we call it the Flea Market House, and they just have trash everywhere, and we seem to can't get any help. He's got a shed there. He piles so much stuff, old tires that carry the water, fences that it's breaking the neighbor's fence down. We were told not to approach him because he has a lot of warrants out after it. So we're in a limbo. He has old cars, he has unlicensed vehicles, and he parks in the grass, in the front yard, backyard, side yard. We just need help.
What's the subdivision again?
It's Meadow Ridge off of Kisker.
You have an address?
Yes. 24... What did I say? 2495?
4594.
4594. I've got it wrote down back there.
We got it.
Yes, and he has... He does not specifically own the house. The girlfriend, I'm assuming it's a girlfriend, but there's a female that the house is registered into. And it is... It's trashed. And like, where he parks, he's driving up in the grass while it's making gullies, and it's... The water's now flowing into the neighbor's yard, which, it's a mess. I don't know what more. I only got three minutes. Because I could go on forever.
I'm sure you...
It's okay. She stopped by the council office before the meeting, and we talked there. So I talked to county attorney, and we're going to find out some more information about that. We'll talk to community development as well, and we'll do some investigation, and we'll get back to you on where we sit.
And I found the other pictures. So...
So we'll be back in touch with you once we find out a little more information about it.
Okay.
Is that good?
That's it, so now.
Good job.
Hey, you're not going to get a Max standing ovation, but you know.
Unless you have a pet with you.
Hey, can I borrow the dog? No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Claire?
Barbara Haidolph.
Good evening. You may not do anything tonight, but I wanted to make sure that, once again, I remind you that I oppose the bill number 4815. This bill is really based upon the 2030 plan. We're not there yet, and the infrastructure that is needed to support the families that would be placed on 100 acres roughly in three-acre home lots is not there. We don't have water, we don't have septic, or sewers, and even the roads are very, very narrow. There's an impact as far as erosion. Water control is already a problem in that area, and in fact, during the rains, you can see that the little creeks practically become rivers, and they reach the top, just bounce up against the bottom of the brand-new bridge on Point Prairie Road. So I want to ask you again, please do not pass this bill. Do not allow them to convert from an agricultural rating to a rural residential. It doesn't make sense. It's not going to be good for our area. If they want to do that, they can wait until we have the infrastructure, and that's really what it all boils down to. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
William Zelman.
Likewise, I am here to oppose bill 4815. And I think you noticed it's writing again. We have received remonstrances from all but one of the adjoining property owners, and we've received all of the remonstrances from all but two of those within 1,000 feet. We're opposed to 4815, and we hope you will vote also to oppose it. Thank you.
Arnie Deanoff.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is Arnie C. A.C. Deanoff, county public advocate and resident. First of all, I'd like to say I was in court in a pretrial hearing today in a special division appointed by the Missouri Supreme Court, because all St. Charles County judges recuse themselves. I'm fighting a wrongly-wrote user tax foul language in the city of O'Fallon, and also six city charter amendments that violated the city charter and state law in their preparation, and they're baiting the voter and lying to the voter. So there'll be a trial tomorrow at 1:00 in Division 6 of St. Charles County by Special Judge Sweeney. On the agenda, or on the St. Charles Community College Board of Trustees' agenda tonight, which I couldn't make because I was in court, they'll be putting a $30 million countywide bond issue on the August 4th ballot, and that will increase people's taxes to pay for the debt service levy. There needs to be four-fifths majority to pass. Also, a bond issue on the April 7th municipal ballot is the Francis Howell School District to the tune of $244 million, and it needs a four-seventh vote. I want to remind the public that nobody up there on the dais owns those county council seats. It belongs to we, the people. County Council Districts 2, 4, and 6, the even numbers, filing begins tomorrow in a lottery system at the County Election Authority located at 397 Turner Boulevard. Or if you want to file for state representative, the Secretary of State Kirkpatrick Building on North Main Street in downtown Jefferson City between 8:00 and 5:00. For county office, you have to have a Form 5120, Missouri Department of Revenue Form, says that you don't owe any outstanding real estate or personal property or income taxes, and that you can be bonded. Must be notarized. A $50 filing fee paid to the party of your choice, to the central committee, and you need to be 25 years of age. And so I'm asking that people get involved. Don't sit on the sidelines. Be part of the solution. Come to the table with real critical issues to solve some of the problems of government that we have here in St. Charles County. As I said, nobody up on the dais owns the seat. You go for an election, and it's an open seat. And so Districts 2 is Mr. Brazel. District 4, the incumbent, Mr. Hammond, has stated he's not going to run for reelection, so that leaves an open seat. District 6, Ms. Schneider, has been appointed to that seat and has never run for election of that district in District 6, although she was elected a circuit judge in the 11th Circuit Court. If anybody needs more information, please contact me, 314-440-9000, or my email address, arniedeenoff@yahoo.com. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Renee Lawrence.
Good evening. Renee Lawrence, Missouri American Water. Just coming up on behalf of Bill 4816, just giving you guys an update, let you guys know I... We got notification that there is a plan to table the bill, but we are still working to provide the information that the county executives wanted. We reached out to the city of O'Fallon to get some information about annexation, and we're still working on that information. But I did want to share that with the council members, that we are still working on the information that was asked, and we'll be prepared to answer any questions as we continue to gather things.
Thank you, ma'am.
Drew Weber.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council, Mr. County Executive and county staff. My name is Drew Weber with Hamilton Weber Law Firm, and I'm also here on behalf of Missouri American Water Company. The reason I'm up here is I wanted to... I watched the last county council meeting, and I wanted to provide some more information on the planning process that went into picking this location. It seemed like there were a lot of questions of residents and some of the council members about the planning that went into choosing this location. So we looked into it, and it's enviable planning, I'd say. So there's an internal memorandum for the Missouri City's water at the time, actually, that said, "Hey, we're going to purchase this property," and one of the purposes for purchasing the property is to build a storage tank on the property. And then as time goes on in the early to mid-2000s, there's another internal memo that reiterates that desire and says, you know, "The population is growing, and we still have a storage tower planned for this property." And then now, now the reason that's before you is because now the time has come, right? The demand is there, and future development is coming where it necessitates building a tower like that. And so I know there were questions that said, "Well, why didn't you build the tower 20 years ago, or maybe shortly after you bought the property?" Well, again, it appears it was forward-thinking. So if you look at that property, it's about 600 to 610 feet in elevation, which is higher than all the surrounding areas. If you look on Wikipedia, which, you know, maybe is a little shaky grounds, but that's higher than any point in O'Fallon and Cotterville. And obviously, it wasn't developed when they purchased it, and, you know, they're a public utility, so they don't just, you know, build five towers and charge, you know, ask the Public Service Commission to charge everyone for five towers in anticipation of, you know, 30 years down the road, right? So they waited until they needed it, and now the time is here where a tower is needed. And so this site has been chosen all along for that location. There was a question about, "Well, what about choosing other sites?" And I'd say the problem with that is, you know, it's not just... It's not like Missouri American Water is, you know, Walmart or some normal company. They can just pick other sites. They have... Need Public Service Commission approval for rates, and it's the rates that pay for developing these types of facilities. So to go to the Public Service Commission and say, you know, "Well, we decided actually to buy several properties and to build all these towers and extend the lines everywhere, you know, to the tune of tens of millions of more dollars," that then gets passed on to our 30,000 customers and rates, is not always palatable to the Public Service Commission. So as a public utility, their internal engineering planning committee, for decades, has been planning this site as a tower. The height may have changed, or the type of tower over the years, but this has been part of their consistent planning. Now, that's separate from the county planning, so you wouldn't have known that, so I thought that was worth sharing. So thank you.
Thank you.
No more speaker cards.
That's it?
I'd like to correct one thing.
Yes.
Mr. Deanoff said, "I will be running for office," so...
Rumors of your retirement are currently exaggerated.
All right. Next on the agenda is an oral report from the county executive.
Oral report this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Next is the consent agenda. Do you have any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to remove minutes from 21020 meeting for a typographical error.
All right.
Second?
Second, yeah.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'd like to make a motion to remove the family-oriented point-of-sale system.
Okay. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus the two items that have been removed?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. First up, I'm going to mention the minutes here.
Actually, I guess we needed to just motion to amend the minutes of 21020, changing the work session in time from 6:37 PM to 6:57 PM. It was just a typographical error, so the three needs to become a five, so that was it.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Brazel.
Well, if you guys saw, Mr. Cronin sent an email, and he was hoping we could talk about this, or at least table it for next meeting on the point-of-sale system, because he had concerns that, why'd we only get one bid, and why'd we only want to get one bid from a Canadian manufacturer when there's plenty of point-of-sale systems within Missouri and within the United States? So he had those questions, and he was requesting if there's no urgency that we just hold off to the next meeting, so we can get some of those questions answered, or at least let him... Mr. Snur.
We actually had two bids. There... This was put out for, you know, just like we do any other bid for services or for tangible goods. The bid that received the award is a toast system. Toast is a... Just in many restaurants that you will see, in many to most restaurants, you will see when the server goes to a... They take your order, and they'll go in, and then, you know, they're punching in on a keyboard-type thing. Toast is well-known in the restaurant industry, and this is essentially a... to the next meeting so we can get some of those questions answered, or at least to let him...
Mr. Schnur.
We actually had two bids. There... This was put out for, you know, just like we do any other bid for services or for tangible goods. The bid that received the award is a Toast system. Toast is a... Just in many restaurants that you will see, in many to most restaurants, you will see when the server goes to a... They take your order, and they'll go in, and then, you know, they're punching it on a keyboard-type thing. Toast is well-known in the restaurant industry, and this is essentially a restaurant application at the Family Arena. The equipment that we have at the Family Arena, the concession stands, is outdated. It is... We've had some failures at times in the past few years, and with our vendor DCRS, we've been able to at least turn that around. In order to get proper updates for that system, it was going to cost us between $35,000 and $40,000 on a system that's about 10 years old. It just wasn't a good investment in old technology. This technology gives us the capability of becoming up-to-date with the order-taking process using a tablet-based system similar to what you see in the restaurants. Second phase of this project would also be to allow us to bring tablets into the suites and throughout the concourses and take orders over the tablets that by Wi-Fi go directly back to the kitchen, so orders don't have to be run to the kitchen, come back to the suite again, can cash people out right there on the spot. So, it's really bringing the order-taking system into the 21st century. The bid... The other bidder in this process was a company called Squirrel, which, again, is another restaurant equipment manufacturer and is similar to Toast, but the price differential's nearly $100,000. DCRS is our service vendor who presently services our system that we have. It's a micro system that is the system that's being replaced. DCRS would be our vendor on this system as well through a maintenance contract. So, we are essentially buying the nuts and bolts for the tablet-based technology for order-taking at the Family Arena. We think this is a solid bid. Toast is a mainstay in the industry. They have their own proprietary gateway for credit card processing, so they're not going away. They're a player in the industry. They're also very competitive because they have such a large base, so just wanted to let you know about that.
Okay. Is there any urgency on approving this this evening rather than two weeks from now?
Not at... There was, but now there is not. We've run into a situation where the processing gateway, credit card processing gateway that our present equipment is on, it's on a system called Merchant Link through Commerce Bank, and Merchant Link was purchased in the fourth quarter of 2019 by a company called Shift Four. Shift Four is shutting that gateway down effective March 31st. We've been successful in obtaining a new gateway. Application's been made. It should be ready to implement somewhere in the first to second week of March, so we will be ahead of the March 31st shut-off of the Merchant Link system. So, it was yes, now it's no. It can wait, and, you know, if you wish to do so, that would be fine, but we feel like we do have a good bid here, and a very competitive bid from Toast because it includes about $14,000 in discounts due to our affiliation with U.S. Foods.
I noticed that there are a couple of the companies that you sent out requests that are from this area, and they didn't respond at all.
Yeah.
Were there others from around the area that you could have requested bids from, or how did you choose these particular ones?
We have, you know, when we put a bid out like that, we generally look for companies that... Any place that we can find them that we think have a chance to be a bidder. We love it when six or seven companies bid on equipment.
Sure.
In this case here, we were happy with the results of the Toast system coming in at a little over $100,000 compared to the Squirrel system that you see in the packet there. But Toast is also a very highly reputable and well-known platform in the industry, and we're comfortable with that, too.
Thank you.
I would just say, we can wait if you guys want to, but I don't think anything's going to change between now and in two weeks. I mean, this vendor's a St. Louis company. I know it's not a St. Charles company, but you can't have everything. The other company was from British Columbia, and nobody else in the area even bothered to respond. And I know we have this discussion back and forth, and like Bob said, we would love for all of our local folks to bid on stuff. I know when we try to buy vehicles, we try to encourage our local folks to bid on it, and sometimes they just don't want to get involved in the process for whatever reason. So, I agree that this is a fair price. It's a fairly local company, so I don't have a problem with approving this, but if you guys want to wait, then we can wait.
It doesn't matter. I was responding, after what you just said, I was responding to Joe Cronin's email, and he got it wrong. He said it was a Canadian... It's on his email.
That's the other company.
Yeah, I know. It's not.
Yeah. That's the company we didn't...
That's what his email said. It was...
Mr. Chairman.
Right.
Just for a point of clarification, where we are is this item is now on the items removed from the consent agenda, portion of the agenda, which is fine. It allows you to act on it tonight if you choose to as a body, but it would be an item that's no longer part of your consent agenda.
Correct. Okay.
I'll be... If you guys want, I don't... I was the one that made the motion to have it removed. I make a motion to have it put back on the consent agenda.
Second?
Well, we can't actually do that.
Oh, we can't do that?
Where we are...
You already approved it.
We already approved the consent agenda.
So, under items removed from the consent agenda, where is where we are in the process, it can still be adopted with a prevailing vote of the council?
Okay.
Okay. It just wouldn't be part of the consent agenda.
I don't want to read Mr. Cronin's mind, but I think the explanation you gave would have satisfied him.
Okay, so then I make a motion to approve this on the consent agenda.
I have a second. Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
I believe the minutes were not approved either. They were amended, but they weren't approved.
I make a motion to approve the amended minutes from 210 from 6:37 to 6:57.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That was a pass. Okay. Thank you. All right. First up is the bill number forty-eight fifteen.
Bill number forty-eight fifteen, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from a agricultural district to RR Single Family Residential District as per application RZ 19-16.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we table this bill.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that bill has been tabled.
Yeah, for an explanation, the petitioner with two council... Knowing that it's remonstrance, the two council members not being here, they wanted it to be seven of us, so they didn't want us to present it tonight. And that goes for the same with the water tower, too.
Correct. All right. Next up for final passage is bill number forty-eight sixteen.
Bill number forty-eight sixteen, an ordinance affirming the Board of Zoning Adjustments' decision on application VAR 19-06.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we table bill forty-eight sixteen.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that bill has been tabled, and again, for the same reason, we, you know, with the amount of interest that we had two weeks ago, we just felt that it would be, you know, be the smart thing to do to have all seven of us present when we discuss the water tower issue. Okay. All right. Next up for bills for final passage is bill number forty-eight seventeen.
Bill number forty-eight seventeen, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a memorandum of understanding between the St. Charles County Region's Workforce Development Board and the St. Charles County Department of Workforce and Business Development and its partners providing services through the Missouri Job Center of St. Charles County.
Okay. Any discussion or comment on this bill? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number forty-eight seventeen, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a memorandum of understanding between St. Charles Region's Workforce Development Board and the St. Charles County Department of Workforce and Business Development and its partners providing services through the Missouri Job Center of St. Charles County. Councilmember Brazel.
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider.
Yes.
Councilmember White and Councilmember Cronin.
All right. Bill number forty-eight seventeen has passed. Next up for final passage is bill number forty-eight eighteen.
Bill number forty-eight eighteen, an ordinance setting final special assessments on properties within the Gudermouth Road Wood Glen Estate Sanitary Sewer Neighborhood Improvement District and Gudermouth Road Wood Glen Estate Sanitary Sewer Neighborhood Improvement District Two. Finding that the Gudermouth Road Wood Glen Estate Sanitary Sewer Neighborhood Improvement District's projects are completed and assessing the cost of such projects against the properties liable therefore, and providing for the collection of such final special assessments.
Comments on bill number forty-eight eighteen? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number forty-eight eighteen, an ordinance setting final special assessments on properties within the Gudermouth Road Wood Glen Estate Sanitary Sewer Neighborhood Improvement District and Gudermouth Road Wood Glen Estate Sanitary Sewer Neighborhood Improvement District Number Two. Finding that the Gudermouth Road Wood Glen Estate Sanitary Sewer Neighborhood Improvement District projects are completed and assessing the cost of such projects against the properties liable therefore, and providing for the collection of such final special assessments. Councilmember Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider.
Yes.
Councilmember White. Councilmember Cronin. Councilmember Brazel.
Yes.
Okay. Bill number forty-eight eighteen passes. Next bill up for final passage is bill number forty-eight nineteen.
Bill number forty-eight nineteen, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the city of St. Peters and the Darden Creek Drainage District Number Three for maintenance of Darden Creek.
Any comment on bill number forty-eight nineteen? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number forty-eight nineteen, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the city of St. Peters and the Darden Creek Drainage District Number Three for maintenance of Darden Creek. Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider.
Yes.
Councilmember White. Councilmember Cronin. Councilmember Brazel.
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum.
Yes.
Bill number forty-eight nineteen has passed. Next up is bills for introduction, beginning with bill number forty-eight twenty.
Bill number forty-eight twenty, requested by Bob Schnur and Kurt Barr, sponsored by Terry Hollander. An ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Missouri Secretary of State for a grant awarded to the Election Authority for an election efficiency grant to assist with election activities, systems and equipment maintenance, voting equipment purchases, maintaining voter lists, and polling place accessibility.
Questions, comments on bill number forty-eight twenty?
I'd like to say thanks to Mr. Barr for getting us the money, and with all of the rigmarole that's been going on, I'm very thankful we do not have caucuses coming up, so good luck with the election.
Yes. Any other comments? Okay, moving on to bill number forty-seven... Oh, excuse me.
Forty-eight twenty-one.
Bill number forty-eight twenty-one. I'm sorry.
Bill number forty-eight twenty-one, requested by Demetrius Chauncey Chapman and Bob Schnur, sponsored by Terry Hollander. An ordinance authorizing the county executive or is designee to execute a program services contract with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for hepatitis A outbreak reimbursement.
Questions or comments on bill number forty-eight twenty-one? Seeing none? Are there any tabled bills to be removed from the table? Seeing none, announcements in miscellaneous? Does anybody have any announcements?
I would like to call the sheriff up real quick because I want his help in making sure that I don't get some things wrong, because he's been intimately involved in the second-largest Mardi Gras celebration that happens in the county. What are our dates that are coming up for the St. Pat's Parade? Do you know that? I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
Thank you. Yeah, it's the 14th is the parade and the run, the Saturday before, which is the 9th, 7th is the Green Tide Gala.
I thought you had a backup in the room, so I felt good in asking you.
You should have just called her up.
I should have. You're right. I'm sorry. So, I just wanted to put that on everybody's forefront and let them know, hey, there's a lot going on in Cotterville coming up in the next month, and we would highly encourage you to get involved and get there early.